Lou, you ready? All right. It is five minutes after four. Normally I'm on Lombardi time and I start meeting promptly, but today I've been a little bit behind schedule myself also. So we're starting meeting in 4:05. This is our second meeting of the month. This is our workshop and during our workshop what we'll be doing is discussing some items that may take a little bit longer than to have at a standard meeting and try to come to some type of resolution and then we would take an official vote during our town meeting. And I do open up the floor during the workshop for comment from the public. And at this point, once we get done our conversation for that topic, if anyone or if we deem that we need some input, we're going to ask our one resident that's sitting in the crowd, Mr. Deco, so we may ask you a question or two.
Dick Reed left me by himself today.
There you go. Well, very good. With that, Ms. Laura Brown is here. She's going to discuss a little bit or we're going to talk a little bit about the employee handbook.
Yes, I apologize. We're trying to get it on the PowerPoint, but my assistant is running problems with her computer to put it on the PowerPoint, so I apologize for that. But we just had an update to our website and she's having problems. So I'm prepared to have handouts.
All right.
So you can always say I'm prepared. Okay. I'll pass these to her. And I'll have these passed around. She'll be bringing some more handouts because I said she needed to make them bigger. I'll have some more because our printer broke down too. That's why it's a full moon and a eclipse.
There was that alarm going on. Where's it at, Lou?
Okay.
Wait a minute. How do you know?
Normally they translate.
So does everyone have a copy?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay. And one's a little larger. That's for me. Okay. What I did is you do have on the side where you could make some notes if you want to. I sent an email to the mayor and commissioners and the captain and Louis. What we're planning on doing is I'm just going over the latest updates of the handbook that were legally reviewed. And as I stated in the email, we are in our staff meeting of the town administrator, Louis George, and the directors. We are reviewing the rest of the book and myself to make any more changes. So we're actively involved in that and we're making changes to the handbook.
And I'd like just to stop you there real quick and mention to you that I'm certainly, when it comes to an employee handbook, I'm very green. I really, this is out of my expertise. I'm not sure if, do you work with an employee handbook? Okay, he does. Charlie's probably worked with one at the school board. Do you probably work through one? Do you work through one? So I'm probably the only one that can't get really any input because I'm self-employed. I have no employees and so I'm going to be kind of along for the ride and I'm going to look for the town officials to give me the guidance. So I'm just here for the ride when it comes to this.
Well, and also you have me, so that helps a lot.
There you go.
Okay, so what we've done is right now also, there was an email that Commissioner Drabinski asked me. I did check in what the cost would be if we were to have the whole handbook reviewed. We have Legit, which is an organization that we have, which is a free service that we checked with that provides us information. And if we were to have Mike, our attorney, Mr. Kevin Karpinski do that, it would be a charge of...
We had McCormick do it.
Yeah, well, we already had Mr. McCormick look through this, but if we were to have him look through the whole handbook of the stuff that we have and had a legal review, it'd be $225 per hour and we'd have to send them the areas that has not been reviewed by legal review. Kevin McCormick did this, the whole bunch that you're here, if you need any additional ones, here they are. But if...
Kevin McCormick is with the Waper Tail Press in Baltimore. We use him for labor and we use Paul Madden for...
Retirement.
Retirement and...
And we use Kevin Karpinski for any type of other...
He's with the different...
Yeah, he's with Legit and that's okay. But if we did, that's how much it would cost and then they'd have to look at the book. But Kevin McCormick was probably the best to use because of his labor and employment background on this. But that's just a number that was given to me and they'd have to look at the handbook. But let's start with this, okay?
Can I stop you a minute?
Yes.
So this whole thing has not been reviewed.
The portion that I'm giving you has been legally reviewed. This part we're going over right now that you have in your hand?
Yes, but not the original book you gave us.
The original book, I am not aware that has been reviewed. It could have been reviewed at another time. Some parts look like they have been.
Well, I have to be pointed out if they haven't.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. And also the information that was here, we also had Polanski had asked us to go through the handbook and this is the stuff that he's asked us to do and this is what I have done too. So this is part of the... Larry Polanski, which was the consultant. Was the consultant.
He came in and called the HR department.
And a lot of hits on it was the handbook that I suggest that we had looked at when I first came in here.
Somebody would come with eyes and at least look at the other part of the handbook. Is there a suggestion?
Yes. So this was the suggestions that he made and that's what we implemented.
Yeah, can I, I know you're very big on, but just to familiarize with what we have. At that time, we were giving two different prices and one was for a employee handbook, I believe it was $5,000 at that time, for him to do the handbook. So there was that price given at that time as well.
Was there a reason why we didn't do that? Because the board didn't vote to do it?
We never did take the vote to do that. And I felt it then because it hadn't been updated then. I think that was what, I don't know, when was the last update on this before you've done all this?
I think the last update was about 10 years ago.
Yeah, and you know how laws have changed and that's why this was so important to cover the town, you know?
And also I was bringing that to your attention because, and also I would say in the last year or so, there was a lot of new state laws, like about three or four of them that will be going over. So did I answer any questions?
No, that's right. I just wanted to make them aware because of Larry Polanski when he was...
And Dr. Roby and they also, he talked to us and them too about evaluation of employees. That was one of the main purposes we also were here in addition to updating that to keep it certain for fall reasons.
Okay. All right. So we've answered those questions. Okay. So what you have in front of you, sorry about, we didn't have it on that, is what I did was the table contents. I redid the table contents because that was something that we needed and when we did that, we had to pretty much redo the whole handbook. So that is the table contents that you have in front of you. And what we did was we decided to put it in order and I think this will help out and we decided to do the paging like this. I think we talked about this at another meeting we had about doing the paging, but we're going to do it per the different sections. The reason why we're going to do that is if we ever had to add something to it, we didn't have to reprint the whole handbook. So that was saved on the trees and it was saved on us and the structure. So that's what we did and that's where you'll see the paging, Commissioner Piner, because you did mention that about having the paging. So that's what you'll pretty much see there. Okay? Yeah, we have plenty of them. Any more? Anybody else need to see some? Please do. Okay, so that's what we did. And then we also, there were some changes, Commissioner Gibbons, you said about putting something in a different order. We did that too. Okay? So I just want to share what feedback we gave on that. And we also said that we put them in different sections. So we do have a section area. We do have these section areas right here. I'm getting a price on that. It'd be pretty expensive, so what we're going to do is have different colored paper and then divide it between the different sections. So that's some other things. All right, let's get to the sections that we had legal review. The first section that we had is the age discrimination policy and we did do that and that was done by us and reviewed by Kevin McCormick. Okay? So we actually wrote the age discrimination policy and it was reviewed by Kevin. All right?
As well as the EOC.
That was also sent to the EOC and they reviewed and they approved it too. Okay?
So all of this was good?
Yes, yes.
Under the consent order?
Under the consent order.
Oh, right.
Yeah, they asked us to write it and we wrote it and I gave it to Louis and then he looked at it and then we gave it to Kevin and he approved it and then we sent it to the EOC. They approved it and we went from there. Okay. The harassment free workplace, we had this in our handbook, but I still gave it to Kevin to review because some things have changed in that and he made some comments as well as what we had our consultant did and he reviewed and he said it was fine. And I made some changes in this too. And Louis, I believe you looked at that too. All right, the at-will employment that was reviewed by the consultant, Louis, myself and Kevin. And we made some changes. You'll see down at the bottom, the exception where it applies to the Upton Police Department because they do have an employment agreement and EFOP contract. The job classification plans, we did not have this before. It was a comment made by the consultant and I also wanted to put this in and Louis and it was also reviewed by Kevin. Every year we work with Kevin. We wanted to put in about the job descriptions. We didn't have that before and we have updated the job descriptions of the employees. But job descriptions are one of those constant things that you're always updating. It's just a format that we kind of changed.
So was it originally under the employer job and classification?
We actually recreated job and classification plans. We never had that before.
Because it says it here on the whole, I guess, table of contents.
We actually...
Jobs and classification.
On this table of con...
The book you gave us...
The book, I did the whole table of contents. We never had it before. I redid this whole thing. This table of contents is brand new. I redid the whole table of contents.
So that's in this version?
Yes. Your table of contents you're looking at now is new. That one's brand new.
This one is?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The other one was very difficult to understand by the employees and everybody, so I redid the whole table of contents. Okay?
Laura, on classification of employees, and I'm just guessing here and Lou, you might be able to help with this too. I would assume that you would be the only at-will employee under a classification?
No employee.
All. The state of Maryland is an at-will state.
An at-will.
Yes.
Explain that to me.
Okay, I will explain that to you. At-will means is that they can resign or we can fire them. So that's what they have the privilege. They can come here to work and say, okay, I'm working here and I would like to resign. What we have in our handbook is that we would like you to give two weeks' notice, but they don't have to give two weeks' notice. They can say, I decided I found another job somewhere else or I've decided I want to leave and nice knowing you, I want to leave. Another situation is is that say we would like to, we don't like to use the word fire, but we say, well, we've decided that we'd like to, we're going to terminate employment or release you, separate you from employment. We can do that at-will. Reasonable...
And that's with all employees of the town?
Well, I said with the exception...
Excuse me?
The problem, the issue you have is that at-will is in a sense governed by...
Federal and state.
Discrimination issues.
Yeah, your federal laws.
So you get an at-will person, if you want to terminate an at-will, you better document very carefully who's behind it even though it is an at-will because if somebody claims an age discrimination, for example, or gender or race or...
Are they eligible for unemployment?
Yes, they can be, let's put it this way. And we will be talking about at-will. We have that in the later part of that.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. John may be able to, do you have a more definitive at-will...
But before you just board the board, John, come on, we as a total group talked about a lot of positions here and we weren't sure exactly what the at-will was. We discussed it over and over when it comes to what employees can be, you know, let go or whatever. But as Louis is saying too, certain time when you're even at-will, there has to be documentation at that time.
Yes, yes. And I think what you want to do is you have federal, state and local laws, okay? And then you also have the, you have guidelines within the handbook, like for instance, like your corrective action. And what we're doing is I actually have developed and we're going to have that in the handbook because we were going by our corrective action under our attendance policy, which we were able to do and we could do, where we have, you know, counseling, first warning, final warning and then termination. You want to go by what they call progressive discipline or what they call corrective action. You want to make sure you do right by the employee and right by the town or the organization because it just makes sense to be that type of employer. There are circumstances that you can let go an employee. Now, can they get unemployment or not? Well, that depends on the unemployment office and stuff like that. There is a tendency that right now that they will lean towards the employee, but it all depends on the circumstances. So they have the right to apply for unemployment. Will they get it? Well, that depends on the factors, like Louis said. Have you done your due diligence? Have you worked, you know, what they feel with that? It all depends on that.
And just for my clarification, and I believe I know the answer, but I want to hear it. The mayor and commissioners have no firing or hiring capacity other than through our administrative...
Well, they...
...and fire people. You have a history of firing people.
Well...
Do we?
Yeah, we do.
No, I think honestly where Robert's come, we just can't as a board come and say we want that person fired. We have to have a mediator, which would be you, to say to that individual that...
Curious to me whether you have the ability to fire people, you do have the ability to fire people. What the consequences of your actions would be might be debatable.
Yes, okay.
That's the point of getting at.
In other words, you can do whatever you want.
I'm appointed.
I think our attorney would have this...
If you're the only appointed physician...
Appointed official.
Yes.
That's different from a person who's hired as a regular.
We're considered rightful employees. He's an appointed position. He's at the pleasure of the board.
Just as a starting point, on the state laws, the state determines that everyone is an at-will employee. However, that can be modified by contract. So there are employees that have employment contracts.
Right.
You got a part of terms of those contracts. If you have an employee manual, you've got a part of terms of the employee manual.
Yes.
Through that, it's part of your contract or apply contract to do that. An at-will employee can be, they don't need to be fired because they can be due to not take their money from this simple set, we don't need you to come back tomorrow and that person can be let go for no reason.
Right.
Right.
If you have a reason at fault, it needs to be, you need to be following those policies that have been outlined.
Understand.
There are other part sets, for example, for classifications of protected classifications that a person can't be let go, the race, gender, ethnicity, age, sexual orientation, religion, you know, those protected classifications. Where would the employee manuals, I think, not specifically camped up in the employee manuals generally, just to outline and determine that a person has not been let go for some of these other reasons.
I understand.
It's a guideline. Nothing to do with the fact that this person is a needed department. And then you have other things like union contracts.
Right.
And there's a contract and...
Very good. All enforcement officers are covered by the law enforcement laws of the federal law system.
Yes.
So that's another factor in, that can't arbitrarily fire a police officer unless you go to a state statutory process.
I got you.
Yeah, but going back to the question before, he's saying that we have the right to fire somebody as a board. We don't.
I don't know what your rights are in terms of, because the charter doesn't define whether you can or cannot hire or fire. I don't think it states that specifically.
It doesn't.
It does not.
You use an administrator to do that.
This is what I just said. This is what I just said.
It doesn't bar you, I don't believe, it doesn't.
No, but it's not...
It doesn't say.
It has not been a practice.
It does not, yeah. It does not. It doesn't state, I looked through the chart.
I think we give the mayor a little bit more power.
You're right about that if you want it.
Are we getting back to that?
You want it.
You're the person they call as deposition.
Yes.
All right, very good.
Now we're going to vacancies. Okay?
If you go to vacancy, you wrote jobs, jobs and classification plans?
Yes, from, what we did is that we looked at this. I used best practices with other HR directors and some of the, we looked at, I looked at the state of Delaware, I looked at the state of Maryland, I looked at Cecil County, I looked at that, and we used best practices from other organizations and what they have used.
Because as you have a jobs and classification plan, at the beginning you say a job is total collection of what happened, then third paragraph you said the job description describes whatever and then the second paragraph, general nature, whatever. I just, there might be some redundancy there, but if you would take the time, sometime we'll look that over again.
Yeah, I had the attorney look it over if, you know, just, but I can relook it over.
Okay, thanks.
Relook is not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask one question before we go.
Yes. No problem.
The last paragraph where it's going determining pay rates, do we have a structured or detailed thing as far as if you're this, this is what it is, if you're this, this is what it is as far as the job?
Yes, we do.
Like a rainbow, steps?
We have ranges. It gives us more opportunity.
And classification for employees.
Yes, we do. At one time they were putting it in the handbook, but it didn't make sense because every, it changes.
As long as an employee can come and ask what those pay grades, is that what, is that what we call them, pay grades?
Ranges.
Well, they are grades.
We call, yeah, it's a grade. It's a pay grade. Okay? Okay, thank you. Not a problem. That's why we have this here. Vacancies, okay? With the vacancies we had here, I think the biggest change was vacancies may be posted internally for five working days while the vacancy is being advertised to the public. We put "may" in there. We made some changes there. Employee application for posted positions, we do that. So I had that reviewed too. It's just, it's a little longer. It's not normally this many pages in the handbook, but I just want to make sure we could all read it and also it's done like this for the PowerPoint. Sometimes I'm looking at it. And of course, the handbook that I gave you, the copy, you do have this in there. Okay? But I just wanted to bring it a little larger so we can look at specifically. And like I said, if you see something that doesn't make sense to you, please let me, you know, send me an email, whatever, after this meeting, whatever, or now, whatever. Next thing is bi-weekly timesheets. The timesheets, that's how it was written in the handbook before, so that's how we, how I kept it. And this was also reviewed.
Louis, in my position over there, I have to do the timesheet, I have to write it down, so, but you need to now, do you have to do the same thing?
We do, for accountability, but we're not held to like the twenty-four six hours a day, still payday.
That's not, it's just a record.
That way I know where the company is at all.
Yeah. And I explained to them the difference between exempt and non-exempt. Because we're not breaking it down there. We're just, we're eighty hours.
Now, is everything done with timesheets? I know at one time I was, I know that the board was considering time blocks.
Yes.
Is there time blocks still in the town?
We, they're still sitting in buildings, but we have to get them taken down.
Can you load into a computer and do it that way?
I thought that was planned at one time.
So they were never implemented?
No, they weren't implemented.
Yeah, because there were so many, and I may be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, employees that constantly go in and out of the building, planning and...
Or have variables, so many variables for the police department.
Right. That it was, almost seemed like it was going to be more money going in and out the way they do or over, you know, the...
A lot of the variety would be required.
Exactly.
To be, I think, a time clock.
Right.
I think a time clock is very good for people to work on an assembly line or a device where they come in and they go, but kind of like some of our, most of our boys are all over the place.
Like parks and raccoons and fields or at schools, they might be taking...
What do you mean, never come in here?
They might never come in and the same with planning and zoning. They step yesterday out looking at things rather than being at their desk.
I just didn't know if it was ever implemented. I know that that was a discussion.
It was, it was.
If that ever came up, you could definitely do it through a phone. We have a program, it's very good, box in the salespeople, clock in technicians, we have people that are out, the drivers actually going to come in and everything is locked in through.
Having it integrated with our payroll, having it integrated into our payroll system was a big roadblock also. There was not a plan that we saw that worked with our payroll, which is really, and other plans that were offered, but would require a change in your payroll system and changing payroll systems is something on a completely after new. There was a whole, there was a...
We had a program that we didn't have the parts for it and couldn't get parts for it. Remember that part?
Yeah, there are a couple of all-stars.
Because we had a piece of program that we couldn't get on the parts for it and it sat for a long while and then everybody got these things together, but it didn't work, so that's where we dropped it.
Very good. Shouldn't them time blocks back that we buy them many years ago?
No, but it's old stuff.
It doesn't make a difference. They're ours, they're ours. They wouldn't even take them back.
Very good. I didn't know if they were implemented or not. Quite frankly, I never thought it was a good thing to have.
Okay, bi-weekly timesheets. Now, we're talking about that pretty much. Everything pretty much stays the same on this. Just tells the employees what they need to do with the timesheets and the policies and the form that they use and goes over the payroll policies, relates it to. And because the table contents was changed, just making sure that everything that goes through it relates back, relates back to the new table contents. And we did review the codes to make sure because some of the codes were obsolete. The FML, the Family Medical Leave Act was already updated and legally reviewed and has already been, we've had a meeting with the department heads and for other individuals that needed to be involved in. And Kevin McCormick came and actually explained to them what the Family Medical Leave Act because people did not completely understand that. So they were, it was explained to them and they completely understood, well, they said they understood it. And we made updates to this because there were updates to the medical, there's always updates to the Family Medical Leave Act, so we have all the current updates to that. And so that's that.
That allows for twelve weeks.
During a single twelve months.
On a rolling year.
Yeah, and we had that.
Has the failure to return probably always been in our Family Medical Leave Act?
Yes. And we've also worked with individuals because after the Family Medical Leave Act, you also have the American Disabilities Act that will come into play and I have... And, uh, as long as I've been director, um, we've always worked along with that with our employment lawyer, so.
So the following determination of the FMLA leave, it comes from you?
The determination of, yes, it's the human resource, but I also, if there's any questions, I also, uh, talk with Louis on that.
And the reason why is I think we had that to happen before, and I don't think we as a board actually understood that, but we had the works up, so we were briefed a little bit more, so.
Yes.
And I don't think Louis understood it in totality, but I think we learned a little bit more about it.
Yes, we all got an education in that.
Other regulations are designed to, to be complex and not always understandable.
Okay, a lot to that.
I got the Maryland Flexible Leave Act.
Yes. That's new.
Yeah, that is the guideline that the state can add on shift.
Correct. Okay, um, the Maryland State Flexible Leave Act, um, this came up because people thought it was primarily for retail. Well, it's not. It applies to, uh, localities, missed the penalties like ourselves. So what it says and pretty much tags on to the FMLA. Um, we had a situation where, um, say for instance, on the FMLA, uh, employee wants to use their sick time. At one time, uh, you could say, well, no, we want you to use your, your vacation time and then your sick time. Well, at this point in time, no, you can't do that. They can use their sick time, they can use their vacation time, they can use their personal time, whatever, they can use that time. So it kind of tags on to the FMLA, so it allows them to use whatever time. That's the easiest way to explain it, um, in our situation, and that's a very nice thing to have available to them. So that's where it comes in with the FMLA. I think you're familiar with that one, aren't you, Sean? But, um, it's very nice to have. Um, it's something that I think is a big benefit, um, to employees in the town now, because it kind of helps lead us in that direction. Uh, so when some places who earn more than one type of leave with pay may elect this type, so it pretty much, uh, that's where it comes on. Employees who use leave with pay under this law is required to comply with the terms. Now, if you have any collective bargaining agreements or employment policies or stuff like that, that comes into play with, you know, that. Okay, um, what we did with the jury duty procedures, we always had jury duty procedures, and our jury duty procedures were fine the way they were. But with the consultant, he wanted us to put down the Jury Service Act prohibits, so we just added that to it, but ours were fine. And, um, so that's why if you see some repetition here, that's what the repetition is, is going through the actual, um, Jury Service Act prohibits and in our procedures.
Essentially, when an employee's called for jury duty, uh, would we pay them? And I think they give them a token of pay or whatever they are, they have to give a package, and we pay all the day.
And that's primarily in Maryland, Delaware acts different, Pennsylvania acts different, and we're very close to the borders, and even New Jersey, we have employees from all different areas. So everything acts different, but primarily that's if Maryland does that, Delaware doesn't do that, so it helps to it, so. But that was the jury procedures, okay? And on the second, just the bigger pages, he'll show you what they are. Okay, new one for Maryland. We currently had Maryland, we currently had a maternity and pregnancy, um, leave even before this came. So I talked to Kevin McCormick and he said, uh, that was a nice policy you had, but go by this. So we're not going to be going by our pregnancy, um, leave anymore. We're going by the Maryland state because this is the state, and this would be a better thing to go by because ours could have some flaws in it that are unknown to us, so we're going to go by this. And this was new this year too, um, so what it does is pretty much just say that, um, we have to accommodate, um, individuals that take maternity and pregnancy leaves. It's, um, just as if it was under the American Disabilities Act, which I believe we've been doing anyway. So I haven't seen, since I've been here, I've been, we've been doing accommodations under the American Disabilities Act anyway, and we've been doing accommodations, uh, for FMLA too, so. That really has, I haven't seen a problem with that. Um, our, our departments have been accommodating that because of our previous, um, Pregnancy Act. Okay. Workers' compensation. Um, I had this reviewed. Um, there were some concerns because of workers' comp compensation. People are not aware of the fact, but, um, most organizations do concurrently with the FMLA. And that goes hand in hand. So, um, with our consultant, excuse me, with our consultant, uh, he brought that up too. It's concurrently. I know that Cecil County and all the other organization governmental agencies do that too. It's done concurrently with your workers' comp. And, uh, that was reviewed by our employment attorney, and he, he's in agreement with that, and if it's applicable, we do that. Um, the reason is, is it does protect, you can go into our charter and you'll see that, that it does protect, um, people's job. But also, you know, depending on workers' compensation, stuff like that, you know, people get concerned, am I going to lose my job or whatever, that. I think we should take in consideration the workers' compensation and the circumstances about that, because we would not want to be in a situation to, um, not help the employee. The next one is the severe weather conditions and emergency. Um, we have reviewed this just to make sure that it's okay with the Fair Labor Standard Act. The, um, because when you're doing anything out of ordinary stuff, so we reviewed this, uh, it does meet those requirements. And I think last year, Louis, we had a lot of situations where we had problems with the storms, the flooding. I remember we had a whole bunch of stuff with bad weather and stuff, so this probably came into place more than anything. Yeah, we did really bad, and most, some of them started like in the morning and, or the night before, or in the middle of the night and stuff like that. Late openings, late arrivals and stuff like that. So I had him review that, just to go over that. Short, short-term disability, um, it's a voluntary, um, plan that we have for the employees. Um, we do have this, this does, um, we do have something very unique at the town, which is really good for the employees, is that we do not have a limit on our vacation or our sick time, which is really good for the employees, but sometimes can be difficult when you have short-term disability. Um, when, when people first come on, um, it's nice that they would take short-term disability because you really don't have anything in case of an emergency. Um, and you need that, you know, pay because you're not giving your vacation, your sick time until the probationary period comes up, so that's good. But when you've been here for a long time, you've accumulated vacation time and sick time, so you, you know, a lot of people here like the town and they stayed for a long time, and we liked them. So that's really good, but you have people here for twenty, twenty-five years, thirty years, they've accumulated a lot of vacation, a lot of sick time, so that's way out there. And they're like, well, what do I need short-term disability for? Yeah, so there's some things that come up. But, um, the thing is, is that this does change with our carrier, so this one we have right now is sixty percent and five hundred a week. Where a long time ago, we had something like eighty percent, which was the norm at that time, so that's something that has to be updated. Um, the other thing that we had is we added OSHA and safety policies. We didn't have this before, and we added this in.
I have a question about the short-term disability.
Yes.
If you have somebody that's here for whatever period of time, is there a policy where they have to use their vacation and or sick leave before they use the, if they have to be?
Um, the short-term disability right now, we do have something where depending on it, if it's an accident, um, they will pay with the first day. If it's not an accident, it's.
No, no, I'm sorry, I mean that way, I meant, uh, you've been here for, say fifteen years, you have three months accumulated already. Do you have to, uh, update vacation, sick time, combination of everything, do you have to use that first before you use your, your short-term disability?
It's pretty much.
Protect, can you protect your short, your vacation and stuff by using short-term disability first?
It depends on what we have written with the, the, uh, insurance company, okay? If you have it set up where you use your sick time, if your sick time, then you use it. The problem is, is that you don't want something where they're not using your sick time, because then they're going to stay out as long as they want to, and they're not going to come back.
Right, I touch, I got you, that's.
So with our situation is, we do have it where they would use until their sick time is done, yes.
And then the STD kicks in now. Do we offer an LTD?
Yes, we do, and we pay for that. But this is the one that we had looked at, yeah. Because otherwise you. Okay, OSHA and safety policies, we didn't have, we updated this to some, we had some on the safety policies, but, um, we also added the OSHA things on this.
I don't see MSHA.
MSHA is, um, something which is Maryland, and we do have that hanging up in the HR, uh, office. If you'd like me to add that, I would, but MSHA is a state one that's under, uh, MSHA is under OSHA, and this is supposed to be guidelines. So if you're filing OSHA, you more than likely you're filing MSHA.
You might want to check into that. I understand that.
It's a little, it's a little stricter.
MSHA is more strict than OSHA. OSHA, everybody follows OSHA because New Jersey has their own stuff.
But MSHA is, if you'd like me, I can put MSHA in, but, um, down in.
We'll put MSHA in.
I will put MSHA in, okay, okay. All right. And then the personal medical information, or as everyone knows is HIPAA, but our legal counsel said that you don't really want to call it HIPAA, because we're not really having HIPAA. It's called personal, um, medical information, but we just put in parentheses HIPAA because no one will know what it is, because everyone calls it HIPAA. Um, what it does is just say that your medical information is confidential, and that we keep it confidential.
Who has the ability to look at confidential files? What are you drawing?
Human resources does, and there's all different reasons for confidential. If you're talking about medical, that makes a difference because in medical, you really, that's usually the employee in human resources. I really wouldn't say department people, but it all depends. If we're looking at something specific like FMLA, I really wouldn't want a department manager getting involved in that. But if you're talking about their sick time and, and a boss is saying, well, they're out sick for this or that, I saw them party or something like that, they might just see what, you know, they might get the doctors and they give it to us, okay? It all depends on the degree, because really, certain things directors should be involved in, certain things they shouldn't be involved because of, well, you know, the legality. Uh, it all depends.
The question is, and not the question, my question, other than you, who has a right to look at your files?
The employees do.
The individual employee.
Yes.
One employee usually cannot look at another employee's.
Correct, and we do have.
I, I understand that I'm talking about other than her administratively, who can look at the files other than her?
The medical files, as it says here, the medical files are separate. The personnel file, the employee can look at the personnel file. Okay, and if the.
Well, answer his question. The question is the employee.
I'm gonna make it real simple for you. If you are on site and somebody needs to go in the file.
The assistant, my assistant can look at the files.
Can Louis do that?
Well, Louis has, yes.
Oh, then it's, can he do that?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to ask him. So when it comes to personnel file, who has a right to go if they're beyond?
Me, Louis.
Louis, okay, so what I'm asking, like you said, that question last year and, uh.
If you guys are on a cruise, you go somewhere, is there a chain, is there a chain of command that would follow down?
Yes, it would, it would be my.
And it's spelled out somewhere.
Yes.
And I'm asking, and, and, and none of us need to go in there, but where does the mayor, who is the top person in the governmental structure, where does the mayor fit in this, whether it's, let's say, the personnel files, I know he wouldn't want to be involved with the medical, but where does that person sit? Because you're looking at the government structure now, and he's at the top, even the town.
Do they have anything in the charter where they sit on that?
Mayor's the executive head of government, so he could look at the personnel files.
Yeah, it's all, I just wanted to know how.
Commissioners, you're probably like, is it?
No, I wouldn't want to, but I'm just saying, just trying to find out what's not so enough.
As Louis told me, the American, probably should have, the mayor wants to do.
Because, you know, sometimes it's nice to know these things, because where was it at the time? We had a hostage situation here. What was that, Lawrence? And the only person who could enact upon that was they were waiting for the mayor, who was in Ocean City at the time. We had something right down the street. You remember?
That's a long time ago.
Well, it was a long time ago, and it was raining, and the mayor had to come back and take, in charge of that situation. So I'm saying a lot of times.
Were you a commissioner then?
No, no, no.
I think it was, it must have been Jim Brown.
It might, it might have been, but, you know.
I think that we were commissioners at the time. We were commissioners and they had the, uh, the doctors.
The doctor doctors in the elements.
Right up there, right.
Well, within the Asian area, I remember that. Would you do that anymore? At least now.
No, this is, this is, it's not, that, Lawrence, you just sometimes need to know who can do what and when.
Yeah, that, that's very valuable material, yeah. Well, then it comes down to you, mayor.
I'm moving right up the ladder here. I have a comment to make on this. As, right for myself as an employee, I don't just want anybody going to my file. Personally, I don't care whether it's HR and the, the head of, uh, departments, you must have a valid reason, that needs to be stated there. Valid reason to look over anybody's files, not just, just looking over, because somebody has the powers here. So number one, I would say, I would definitely be offended if somebody's just looking in because they have the power to look at my file.
I would, I would agree.
So someone needs to be put in there that stated a valid reason to look at their files, and if that means the administrator has some, uh, uh, dispute or issue, then that's a valid reason, but if not, I don't want to see anybody looking at my file unless I, I know for sure that I have something.
Well, nobody looks in.
No, we gotta make it clear, what we're saying here.
And what I'm saying is, I.
Well, we have to file things.
Uh, if I'm going to terminate somebody, look and see if there is progressive discipline in that file.
But what we're saying is, or if there's false, false information, like for example, an applicant or a, I mean, an employee who submitted an application for employment, and I was given information that the information was false, I would go in to verify what information they had submitted and weigh against the false, you know, the allegation.
There's usually two people when someone's looking at a file.
Is there a place that you can sign that you went into their file so that when they wanted to look in their file, they could see who looked at their file?
No, we don't do that. That's the, the second part of it. It should be documented, that's the date that you reviewed that file and reason why. There's not just going in there and saying, oh, um, so and so, oh, let's look in the file and see what they did for last week. Did they come in last week? That happens, and I don't care whether you say it didn't happen or will not happen. If we open it up to see, you know, the.
Well, we can put a sheet in there that says that I, for example, will look in the file. That's, that's what you want. But I still look in the file. He'll see that I looked in the file.
Do you have a reason for the cause?
I would have a reason. I would put in there a comment, looking at files, see if employee came in late, you know, that type of stuff.
And usually, other than the people.
Somebody has to be in charge here, and I have to take charge in this situation, so.
And usually, other than them people, whoever would go in the file would sign it, and that right would always be there.
We do have, we do have where if you're going in to look at a file, there's a form that you have to fill out.
No, well, we already handed that.
We have a form that you have to fill out if you're going to be looking into someone's file.
Well, in the past, I'm just stating this, in the past, there's been employees coming to ask to see their file. I've, I've been told, no, they can't see it. Now, whether or not we're, we're.
Any employee can see their personal file.
Well, what I'm making is, there, if I come into more and say, I'd like to see my file, I don't hear nobody say, oh, you can't see it. But there has been employees that have been turned away from not seeing it, Louis.
Well, usually what we have to do is we have to, um, some of those files were not, when I came on board, what was in those files should not be in those files. There was all types of different medical information and some other stuff that should never have been in a personnel's file. Okay?
Whether it's you, or whether it's whoever, I'm just using example. If I asked to see my file, whether, if something was put in there accidentally, and I wanna see my file, I don't wanna hear nobody tell me, "Oh, there's something in there you shouldn't see." And that's been told, so I'm just using that as an example.
Okay, well, we're gonna do that. I'm gonna have a sheet that just has the personnel file, and will include the name, address, I mean, name-
Just the name and date.
Date and time that that file was reviewed in a commentary period. And the employee would have to be sitting with you, looking at your own file. You personally wouldn't want the employee to-
Yeah, we don't wanna anything move from there.
Well, what if they removed it?
If they, yeah, things can be removed. We, HR, I've never seen where somebody sat by themselves to look at it. You have to sit down with an HR because I have been there where people have removed things from their file, and that's been the original copy. And luckily, we made a copy of the file before, and they took out original copies. I'm not saying everyone does that, but original copies have disappeared.
Very good. All right, I don't have any questions in regards to-
I just have it.
Yes.
All right, so everything that's been reviewed is what Larry Glansky said needs to be reviewed, correct? So the rest of the book does not?
Everything that we have done, he's asked about the book. There's other things that we're working on with the performance and other stuff.
So it's not finished yet? Because I, there's like forty other things in here. I checked off everything that's here. But there's forty other things that you still have to go through. Is that correct? Or is that all you have to do?
That's all I had to do. But what we're doing now is, we're going throughout, through the book with the department heads.
It's staff.
And staff meetings.
But we've already added some things and need some changes.
We went through about three-quarters of it already. And then we're gonna, at the next staff meeting, finish it off. And we're making changes to it. And we're gonna make the change that Commissioner Given has given us. And then the whole book has been reviewed.
Okay, so what staff changes does not have to be reviewed by professionals, is that what you're saying?
No.
I mean, by the-
We may make work, lady, I've gone to work once a month. I don't need to have a-
Well, we took, we took out the thing about, like-
Worked damage.
Nylons, everybody has to wear nylons, that's not, yeah. We made changes about certain things that did not make sense. I made some changes about HR, things that we should be putting in instead of, shouldn't be in. But Kevin McCormick can look it over if you choose. That depends, that will cost some money. I gave you an estimate of what. So if you wanna look at the other sections legally and have them done, that would be your choice to have. But, yes, sir?
When you say, "Look over certain things that don't make sense," sense to who?
To a human resource director.
Okay, then that's a question. When you say, "You don't need no one to look over," what you feel as though doesn't make sense may not be what is sense to the employee. So something should be a fair, happy medium here somewhere, not just whatever the employee-
I'm not saying that you should not have it looked over by legal Commissioner Piner. I'm just saying that we've, Louis wanted us to look over, we did.
Well, I'm saying, what makes sense to me may not make sense to Louis. And I would like to make sure that what's being documented and then we're signing off is something that is agreed upon instead of just something that's made sense by one side of it.
I was not one side. He's looking through the whole thing.
To the board for review.
Well, no, no, I, because everything that I do, I give a copy to Louis, and I expect my boss to review it and give me feedback, which he has done. Because it would not just be my opinion. And I also talked to Louis about having legal review, and then he reconsidered and had legal review, and that's why we had this part over. And I said, "Would you like to have it all?" And it is very expensive, and I would not make a decision unless I brought it up to Louis or your decision. Because the more people that look at this, the better it is, the better feedback we have. And that's why we're also gonna have this presented to the employees because their opinion's very important to me.
Was there an estimate on how many hours it would take to review this?
If we do, we would have to give them a copy of what we have for them to give us a good estimate. That's what was taken back. I called Kevin before because I said to him, "I know you're just looking over this, but realistically, what would be the cost?" And he's giving us the number too, because I always think it's good to get a couple numbers for, to make a decision. But I have done HR books before, and we've always had a legal review. Because, you know, legal reviews are what you learn to have handbooks. I don't know, has your organization ever did legal reviews of handbooks?
My office doesn't do them, but I do.
Okay, so.
I would say, once we get wrapped up, are we- If you want to, all we have to do to make quick of this, we'll just finalize the draft and send it down to Kevin McCormick and have him review the entire page one. Then, and then do it regardless of the expense because the board would have a comfort level. The only thing I would caution you about is that an attorney that reviews it doesn't make the rules, they just say, "Can you do this?"
Yes.
You know, like, if you say, you can drive a vehicle, you have to have a marijuana driver, it's like, well, state laws, so you gotta have a marijuana license. Or a valid license, we don't say in Maryland, it's a valid. It might be a Delaware, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, or West Virginia resident, who knows? And all those types of things that have been in the book. But the highlighted areas she's referring to were where Ellis and Larry Glansky highlighted. And a lot of them, that's been done. So we don't have to have those reviewed again, but the remaining sections in there, work rules, things of that nature, if you feel comfortable, we'll just do it. Or just send the final draft down, and we can quiet debate about it. You know, something, we'll just do it. I feel more comfortable. It's the file or the town.
Yeah, because I brought that up to Louis to have this reviewed, and then we did that, and then why not?
Any other questions from the board?
There's just one, that message from the employee, from the mayor commissioners, on the final paragraph, there is some grammar there that needs to be, I think-
Where is it?
It's your last, it says, "We strive to make the sample clear and concise and explain your benefits."
You wanna just give me that?
Should you have any questions, we hope you will contact your supervisor. And should your supervisor is unable, so it just needs to be reviewed there.
Yes, please. Oh, you got that one, yeah.
Mr. Lemon had a question. Mr. Lemon, I knew that you probably got a little expertise in the-
I have no expertise. Anyway, I have some questions.
About the handbook, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Does the supervisor sign off on the timesheets?
Yes.
I assume that the supervisors are aware of the documentation issues that she discussed. Do you get with the board and all that? And the courts, I mean, how do you document misconduct, or like this, and all the different things that-
The supervisors are very aware of the rules. Are you going over the handbook with them?
Yes, we're, yes.
Some supervisor's been here for a long time.
We're going over that in our staff meeting, which is all the directors in the staff meeting with our staffing, we're going over that. And know that they have to sign off on that and what the rules, the Fair Labor Standards Act and stuff like that, yes.
See, that's really critical. You guys discussing this pretty very good.
Um, yes.
The supervisors are the ones that make it, make it work and effective. So I just think that needs to really be emphasized with the supervisors because they're, they're the ones that see the failures to follow the rules.
And when I first got here, I went over that with the departments, when we were looking at that, the timesheets and everything, and going over, making sure they understood about the Family Medical Leave Act and how that works, and different areas of that too. But there's always, it's always good to have a refresher.
I would suggest that we go very, well, are these, are these, these books loosely or are they bound?
Um, they're bound.
When you do loosely?
Well, they are loosely.
Oh, what, what you, they're in, they're in this.
They're put in a binder.
They're put in a binder.
But they're never-
So you can update them?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I didn't know.
Well, I was thinking bound by, by this.
Another question, should you have a reference to the code of ethics?
Yes, we do.
You do?
There's two references. One is in the HR department, and one is on the website.
And we make references to it, too.
This personnel manual?
Yeah, there, yeah, there is a reference to that in the employee manual.
When an employee gets his book, does he sign off?
Yes, he does. Yes, he or she does.
So he signs off that he can see?
Yes, there is, there's one that's in the book that says that he keeps, he or she keeps, and it's one that be put in the file.
So it is passed back to you, and you follow?
Yes, it's in their employee file, yes.
You all talked about sick leave and parents' vacation, this and that.
Yes.
Are we, are we applying for that, shows of liability?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Shows up there, lauded. All righty, status of the stormwater puns. Two hands up. Fifty, come on down. Come on over now. You want me to wait a second, EJ? No, go ahead, I'll finish.
Commissioner Glansky, thank you very much. I think you're good. I have to sign off. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Social Security law, she ain't very known.
Oh, my, oh, before you talk about the state of the game.
Oh, listen, did you get the university bill or not?
We got care issues?
Yep, he's drafted.
If Laura got this, but I do want to move a problem and lay it down.
Must be issued from me, why didn't you come ask me?
All right, there we go. Are we good to go?
We're good to go. Produce.
Be dynamic, dynamic, be dynamic.
Yeah, it's the Broadway theme, yeah. It's got the music, we don't have the audio.
Did you do that? Yeah.
All righty, sir, you were on. Let's get to it.
Stormwater management is not a very exciting subject, so I'm not gonna try to be too busy. So I'll try to be as concise and comprehensive as possible. All right, Michelle? Stormwater. Basically, stormwater is what accumulates on land as a result of storms. Stormwater is water from storms. Uh, next slide. Uh, stormwater management. Stormwater management is the reduction of non-point source pollution from waterways entering into waters of the state to the maximum extent possible. Just to give you a little trivia here, the EPA, which is the Environmental Protection Agency, started the Clean Water Act in 1972. And in 1987, they developed the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Now, what they did with this system was, they gave it to all of the states within the country a permit to discharge water from their local waterways into the waters of the state. And in 1991, the EPA created MS4s. Now, what an MS4 is, is a municipal, separate storm sewer system. Basically, the EPA had to classify the system that distributes water from a municipality jurisdiction parish within the state into waters of the state, and they called this a MS4. Now, as it pertains to the town of Elkton, that would be MBE, which is Maryland's Department of the Environment. And in 2001, they classified Elkton as an MS4. Pretty much, there's a certain criteria that the state uses to classify a jurisdiction or town, city, village to be a MS4. That depends on population, proximity to a watershed, body of water, the amount of stormwater management facilities in that area. And in 2001, they determined that Elkton should be an MS4. Now, I say all that to say this, in 2003, Maryland Department of the Environment issued the town of Elkton an MS4 permit. So basically, they deemed smaller municipalities within the state, and this goes along with all the municipalities in the entire country, a permit to discharge water into waters of the state. And with this permit, there's certain requirements that we have to meet in order to discharge water. This permit is the NPDES Phase II permit. Now, there's a Phase I permit, which I believe the county has because they're a larger municipality, they have a larger stormwater infrastructure. Phase II is for smaller municipalities. And these are the six requirements or components that the permit requires. The first one is public education and outreach. Second one is public participation and involvement. Third one, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Fourth one, construction sites, stormwater management. Erosion sediment control. Fifth one, post-construction, stormwater management and development. And the last one is pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. Now, these six program components is what the EPA deemed, or in theory, they decided that if municipalities within the country, within every state, follow their rules or their guidelines of each of these control measures, they'll reduce pollution from the, from entering into the waters of the state. Now, within each of these six program requirements, there are subdivisions. And the Maryland, the Maryland Department of the Environment spells out each of those subdivisions in, in terms of, in terms of, it's on a continuum, I'm trying to make it as concise as possible. There's a continuum basis. So for public education and outreach, the permit has an expiration, but the town has to fulfill this from now until the end of time. Basically, each of these control measures have to be carried out from now until whenever. So the stormwater management program, as it pertains to the town of Elkton, to Cecil County, to any municipality within the country, is an ongoing thing that will never end. And pretty much, these six control measures, which also are called best management practices, is pretty much my job. I make sure that the town is in- I make sure that the town is in compliance with this permit's requirements. And that's what I've been doing since I started with this program. Alright, next slide. I started with the stormwater program in two thousand and five. I took it over in the beginning of two thousand and six. And when I joined, there was not a lot going on with the program, it was in its infancy stage. All we pretty much had is a proposal from KCI to do it themselves, and we just contracted KCI to do it. And we used their proposal and developed our own. So, uh, from two thousand and five, we created a stormwater management website, featuring the Department of Public Works, uh, we created a stormwater management public education curriculum, uh, we set out to do preliminary mapping, GIS mapping, which is basically a map of the town's stormwater infrastructure. Uh, we conducted outreach activities, we built this infrastructure database, which pretty much has detailed information on all the stormwater management facilities within the town. We received local businesses' stormwater management maintenance compliance, which is basically getting businesses to maintain their stormwater management facilities. We created a DPW stormwater management training program. We created stormwater management public services announcements. And we created public works training films. Next slide. As it pertains to the EPA, MDE, and our permit to discharge waters into the waters of the state. Now, yeah, it's just the same slide with highlights. The highlighted, um, topics are what MDE and the EPA really want us to focus on. So creating a webpage, page, uh, was one of the first permit requirements, and we did that. We can, we still have one. The second thing was getting preliminary mapping, which is a, a full map of the entire town of Elton stormwater management infrastructure, which should be displayed somewhere here within the town administration building. And I gave a copy of that mapping to Gene probably about three or four years ago. So it's here, and we fulfill the permit requirements by doing so. The state also wants us to have a infrastructure database, which is cataloging all the stormwater management facilities and presenting it to MDE, so they can present it to the EPA, to say whether or not this municipality, this, uh, this municipality is carrying out what it's supposed to do. And stormwater maintenance compliance, which is one of their main goals, which is getting privately owned, not publicly owned stormwater management facilities or facility owners to take care of their stormwater management facility. It may sound like a lot, I'm trying my best to be concise. Next slide. Alright, and just a breakdown of what, um, I've seen done with the program. In two thousand and five, uh, when I started, there was the stormwater pond criteria, a DPW policy guide, a non-compliance enforcement program. These are the foundation, uh, components of the permit. So, I guess, as the EPA gave the state, and the state gave to us municipality this permit, they said, if you get this groundwork done first, your program will pretty much go on cruise control, and as far as reducing non-point and point source pollution. So we did that in two thousand and five. In two thousand and six, when I took it over, there was no education. No, we had no education aspect to the program. So, what I did was, I created a stormwater education curriculum that we can take to the schools, um, from kindergarten to twelfth grade, even some college, that we can take that to the schools and teach or present before the students, uh, stormwater management. We created the website, uh, and a drains for rain campaign, which is what we did that allowed local organizations and schools to place placards and stencils in developments within the town of Elton, which we've done a few of those activities before, in great success. In two thousand and seven, we focused on training. We had the foundation material set in place, all the documentation, all the policy guides, all the structure in place, so we decided to do training. And this training was on erosion and sediment control. A few of the public works employees attended Denrex Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, which is a very vigorous, intense training. It's a three-day class, I think down in Dover. There was field training, there's a take-home test. It was heavily involved, and we all passed, and after that, I, I guess I would say I worked as an intern for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade as the erosion and sediment control inspector. When they started the job, they did not have any, a person with a green card. And you have to have a person with a green card, which is erosion and sediment control inspector, on a job site for work to be done. So I act as proxy for that job for a couple of months. And in two thousand and eight, we focused on creating our own erosion and sediment control program. Even until this day, the present day, the town does not have delegation of erosion and sediment control. Now, erosion and sediment control pertains only, well, not only, but mostly to construction sites. When you dig up a portion of earth, there's sediment, that, that, the roots are broken up and you have dirt. That dirt, when rain hit it, it runs off into the water. What erosion and sediment control does, it limits the amount of dirt or sediments escaping a construction site and entering into a body of water. So, as it pertains to the town of Elton, we rely on Maryland Department of the Environment to do our erosion and sediment control enforcement, which is a plus and a minus. For a plus or positive, we have a direct representative from MDE to come down here and enforce erosion and sediment control. Developers, contractors will listen to an MDE representative before they listen to a local representative. So, on the con side, we have one representative that comes out of Cambridge once in a while to check on a construction site, which is not very good. We would need somebody on a daily, day-to-day basis, going to these construction sites and making sure that sediment does not leave these areas. So, we set forth to put that program in motion. As we realized, with help from MDE, Hartford County, and the other counties around, it requires a lot of resources. It requires an individual or several individuals to take on that program. So, we kind of put it on the shelf, as per say. Next slide. Two thousand and nine, in two thousand and nine, we, how do I explain this? We purchased Assist MS four software in two thousand and seven. We received training on this Assist software in two thousand and seven. What this Assist software did was, any activity, anything pertaining to the town of Elton's stormwater management program, we were able to input it into this database, and it would generate a report that would be comprehensible to MDE. When we got it in two thousand and seven, we kind of looked at it, said, ooh, ah, to the bells and whistles of it, but we never used it. But, so in two thousand and nine, I decided to take all of the information that we were gathering, since I joined, which was in tablets, agenda books, it was everywhere. Word documents, Excel, spreadsheets, everything you think of. And I decided to put that into the Assist software database, which, we found out later, Cecil County uses the exact same program, which became beneficial to us later on. In two thousand and ten, MDE required that municipalities with a MS four permit revise their stormwater management ordinance. What this ordinance was based on was, pretty much for developers and engineers to develop stormwater management facilities for property, because if you build or you construct a property, um, over fifteen hundred square feet, it has to have erosion and sediment control, or some type of stormwater management on that property. So what they did, MDE did, was they pushed the limits to what engineers could design for any particular part, project going on in Maryland, which is, it had to be the most environmentally positive stormwater management plan they could think of. And if they couldn't do that, they had to explain in explicit detail why they couldn't do it. So that was a stormwater management ordinance. And during that time, we created a stormwater management committee, which consisted of myself, Gene Minner, and unofficially correct Trussell. And, uh, during that time, I was able to collaborate with the Cecil County's stormwater and sediment branch. My intent was to mimic or make our stormwater management programs parallel. So in the event that a developer who developed in Cecil County can easily come to Elton and expect the same experience. And during that time, we were able to kind of put our heads together and go to separate projects, and Van Funk from Cecil County would come to the projects, and Elton, I would go to job sites with them. And we were able to kind of see where we contrasted in our programs and kind of find a way to be on a medium, um, with both of our programs. And that worked out great, and it's still working today. In two thousand and eleven, MDE requested that all small MS four, MS four permities submitted cumulative stormwater management report. Before this happened, um, MDE said, every year, just send us A, B, C, D, E, what you did with the program. But this cumulative report, they wanted A one, A two, A three, A one, B, they wanted a detailed explanation of everything we did with the program from two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. So I threw everything I could in this report to satisfy MDE, and the result was, they was pretty much impressed with it and generally accepted it. And as a big note, in two thousand and eleven, the town was introduced to the watershed implementation plan. In two thousand and twelve, we focused on pollution prevention, which is where we had our first annual pollution prevention day. Again, collaborating with Cecil County, um, Tanya, I think her name is Tanya Adams, she's in charge of landfill. They have a pollution prevention day every Thursday, which lands on a Sunday. I sat and talked with her and see if we can do something collaborative, and we'd have our own pollution prevention day within the town of Elton. So what we did, what we wound up doing is having a pollution prevention day on Saturday with vendors, um, people from the health department. We even reached out to Home Depot, so that they could bring some of their environmentally friendly, equipment, detergents, mulching blades, um, pretty much anything that dealt with being green. We invited residents to come out and participate in our pollution prevention day before they attended the counties, and it worked out pretty good. And from two thousand and thirteen to now, the focus has been pond maintenance and rehabilitation. What I did last year, and to make a long story short, since two thousand and eight, Public Works has not been able to efficiently maintain our stormwater management facilities. There is about a hundred and twenty-five stormwater management facilities within the town of Elton. The town is responsible for twenty-two of those. Now, on the flip side, the county is only responsible, I believe, for about two of theirs. Up until two thousand and eight, we was able to efficiently maintain all of our ponds from the spring until the fall. After two thousand and eight, we were not able to stay up. Whether it be personnel issues, staffing of more responsibilities, we just haven't been able to recoup since then. So, this, if we can't get over this hurdle, we're going to have a hard time dealing with the next topic I'm going to talk about. Dan?
What do you recommend?
More staffing. A separate amount of employees to just handle ponds alone.
Okay, right now, the grass crew does it, right?
Yes.
So they just have more than they can do?
Pretty much, yes.
And I think in Sidney's case, to maintain the ponds, they're much more intensive, because you can't, you can't always get in with a mower, if you're going with a weed winder, or that kind of stuff.
Right, right.
So it's a much more labor-intensive process, but we've tried, for economic reasons, to simply have one crew do everything. And I think that what Sidney's moving to, is you actually need to have people dedicated to constant stormwater management, especially during the season when it's a high growth rate, because they can get over, they can sprout trees and everything.
Well, I think there's a, uh, you see it all the time on, on quite a few of the landscapers' vehicles that cut grass today, they're actually certified to cut stormwater management ponds. Now, is there a, a, a requirement for even us to cut our ponds? Should we be, should, should our guys that are cutting our grass, should they have a special class to cut, there's nothing, they can just go in there?
Go, anybody can go in there.
Okay, very good. So that's kind of like a, uh, they put that on the truck there, just to make it sound a little bit better.
Sound a lure, you know, heads up, we'll start their advertising.
Could you clarify something?
Sure.
You said there was about a hundred and twenty-five in the town, and the town is responsible for twenty-two of them.
Yes.
We had previous conversation, I think in the workshop, about some failed homeowners associations.
Yes.
You guys having to cut more than the twenty-two?
No, that, the, yes, yes. The one question is, the courts of Southfield, which is Button Woods, and those are the two of the hardest ponds to keep maintenance on. We took that over, I guess, because the HOA went default. And basically, what, what do we do, we had to take it over. And it's, I don't know if it's a, it's a thing, what was, would it be a good idea to stop taking over stormwater management facilities for developments in order to?
It's good in the sense that a government can implement resources that private, private people couldn't necessarily do. And a good example is the courts in Button Woods, their homeowners association went default, and everything kind of went to hell out there. And of course, the town's got to keep, add to that to our load too, so we should, uh, adjust our staffing for those additional loads. But if you're going to be efficient in maintaining all our grass and parks and ponds and everything, you have to increase our staffing in Public Works to do that, because, um, of course, uh, where Danny left?
He's behind me.
Yeah, Danny probably tested what he would need there, because if you measure out the man-hours, you need to do that properly, and then, uh, you know, factor in all your own issues there, and, and do it. I mean, I, I don't think that you can leave it to a home group of people to take care of.
I, I guess what I'd like to see when we get near, uh, as we start our budgeting process for next year, is I'd like to know, and I, and I think Dan has kind of worked on this to a degree, how much it would cost to contract out those twenty-two ponds?
We, we, um, I went with Heartstone Landscaping in two thousand and ten. I sent them a proposal, we went out and analyzed all of the ponds, to see how much it would cost for them to maintain it from April to October, twice a month. And the price then was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for twice a month, for six months. And we would be left with the heavy maintenance. So that was three, four years ago, and I'm, I'm assuming it would be a little bit more now.
And when you say heavy maintenance, I understand what that means.
That's cutting trees, taking out tree roots, um, repairing piping, any type of concrete structure that's inside the pond, they'd have to do that, or, or filling the holes, or place anything like that.
You said we would be?
Yeah, they wouldn't have that. Would you have the little clip lights and things like that? I'd actually like to see, uh, three or four quotations, and maybe, that's something we could put out on bid. It would hit the, do a bid, and we, we do a bid package, uh, to see, see what we could get those twenty-two taken care of. Now, it may work out to where we have to just bring on more people for the town. It would work strictly on those stormwater management ponds, but I know where you're going with this. I mean, they have to be maintained.
They have to be maintained.
Uh, if, if we don't have these things maintained properly, we are in trouble. So it's, it's a, uh, to me, it's a priority that these things are taken care of. And I think you, you'll probably let us know what happens if we don't take care of them.
Oh, yes.
So I, I think you're going to probably move that way with that, but, and I don't know how much they have, uh, how close we are to that point, but I think if we got someone to get them things knocked down and, and taken care of initially, maybe we can get enough crew to maintain them. But we're taking care of those stormwater management ponds about one. maybe we can get enough crew to maintain them. But we're taking care of those stormwater management ponds about once every two months, where they should be taken care of twice a month. And that's what my observation has been since I've been in office since then. And it's no one's fault, other than I know that we don't have the bodies.
And the town has grown, and we've taken on more responsibilities as far as grass maintenance and cold cuts and things like that.
And it kind of opens up another question that I had for John that we have been discussing. When we've taken over these homeowners associations that have collapsed, and Button Woods is a great example. Here you have a stormwater management pond that we really didn't budget for, for all these years. Is there a way, one, we reassessed that neighborhood for maintaining that stormwater management pond in the areas that they were doing, or two, we encourage them in some manner to start their homeowners association back again, where it may be a benefit for them to take it back over and maintain things themselves. So those are a couple of questions that I've had that we've been discussing, and I'm not sure what way's good, bad, or different. But we have a lot of places that, I couldn't even imagine if your neighborhood, for example, homeowners association went under, or Patriots Glen went under, or Kensington Quartz went under. I guess we'd just be, it would be overwhelming with the amount of additional yards and grass that we have to maintain. And I don't think that we should put that burden on residents or areas that are already taking care of their areas. So that's something we gotta think about, but bouncing all over the place, but...
Yeah, well, that's, it's, it has to be a priority. If not soon, very soon.
Well, tell us what's happening.
The next topic is the watershed implementation plan. I'm pretty sure Gene may have mentioned this too in a meeting or in some capacity. Next slide, Dan. The watershed implementation plan. I like things explained simply, so I'll try to give it to you the way I understand it. Several years ago, there was a testing done on the Chesapeake Bay. And it received a D, I believe, or failed grade. In some aspects of the bay, it had dead zones, which there was no wildlife, no biology going on. What the EPA did, just as they did with the Clean Water Act and their initiative to do that, they gave the task to the states that directly affect the Chesapeake Bay with reducing two chemicals, or two things that are contributing to the degradation of the Chesapeake Bay. And what EPA, in theory, thinks it is, is nitrogen and phosphorus. Nitrogen and phosphorus are direct results of non-point source pollution, which is your fertilizers, your soaps, detergents, household cleaners, trash and debris, plastic, all types of things that we use every day. Point source pollution is very easy to deal with. You know where it is, what it is, how much it is. Non-point solution, non-point source pollution is different in the aspect that it's random. Anybody can do it. It can be happening anywhere. And there's really no way to enforce or to reduce it. You can't tell, you can't, you know, go around every neighborhood 24 hours a day making sure people don't wash their cars or dump anything down the 1,800-plus catch basins we have within the town of Elton. So the EPA decided to go with this plan. And with the watershed implementation plan, just like the MPDES Phase 2 permit, they gave it two-year milestones. Basically, they want municipalities to achieve a certain percentage of this plan or to implement a certain position, a certain percentage of this plan within a certain amount of years. Starting from 2011, and Gene knows a wealth knowledge about this, way more than I ever know. It started in 2011, and 2013 is another percentage, 2015, 17, 2019, 20, up to 2025. In theory, the EPA figured if we reduce this amount of nitrogen and phosphorus with this plan, we'll be able to achieve 100% of the allocated reduction for nitrogen and phosphorus in, within any jurisdiction. That's ridiculous. There's no way that can ever happen. So what they figured out in 2013 is a Phase 2 WIP program. It said, well, we kind of overshot our projections for implementing this thing, so by 2025, we expect 60% done instead of the 100. Now, the way they want municipalities to reduce this nitrogen and phosphorus is to modify existing stormwater management facilities, build additional stormwater management facilities, and require engineers or developers to design stormwater facilities for new construction to be environmentally sound. The issue that the town of Elton has is if we cannot contain or efficiently maintain existing stormwater management facilities as they are, how are we gonna be able to maintain larger stormwater management facilities, or more stormwater management facilities? Which is something that I'm working on, trying to figure out a way to create a program that we can expand. Right now, we're trailing, so we need to see how we can get a boost to get ahead. And the watershed implementation plan is, how can I explain this? The EPA, which is the federal government, they're holding the town's MS4 program permit, which allows us to discharge water into the waters of the state as ransom if we don't fulfill this watershed implementation plan. Basically, they're saying, if you don't do this, if you don't clean up this bay, we're gonna revoke your stormwater management permit. Now, by revoking that, they can stop the town's growth, they can enforce criminal cell penalties, fines, they can reduce the capacity for our sewer plant. There's a lot of things that MDE can get created with as far as enforcement and fines for not fulfilling this. So it's nothing that municipalities, small, large, with plenty of resources or no resources at all, we cannot avoid this from happening. And the state, MDE, wants to know what we're doing with this program every two years. And if we're not showing any progressive forward progress with it, eventually, they're gonna do some enforcement. Luckily, for us small municipalities, especially Maryland, they don't know what they want to do yet. So they don't know if they want to fine us, or they want to, you know, reduce the, revoke the permit. They don't know yet. So we have a small gray spirit, which is not really a gray spirit, but we have some time. But we shouldn't take advantage of that and more or less be progressive or do something with this program. One of the ways that the town of Elton can immediately help put forth this program or move forward with this program is finding a solution for reducing the amount of yard waste going into the stormwater system. Now, this service was in place before I got here. I don't know who started, why it started. In 2007, I came before the board with the deputy director at the time to see if we can remove that service of yard waste collection. I don't know why I remember this number, but the amount we were, the amount that it costs to remove yard waste for our residents was $39,000, and that was in 2007. And we requested that removed, but that was not. So here we are in 2014, pretty much asking the same thing. This would be a direct, immediate response to moving forward with the watershed implementation plan.
Sidney, real quickly, when we have the yard waste and we're asking our residents currently right now, they put it onto the street next to a storm drain.
Yes.
We have bad weather. It rinses the yard waste into the storm drains. They head and they end up at the stormwater ponds.
Yes.
Then we clean that stormwater management pond, or is that how it kind of gets out of control?
It goes, pretty much, it goes into the storm sewer system. Most of the residents place it on top of the catch basin. You, pretty much, everybody knows the catch basin, it's that great, it's on the side, either side of the street. They place it on top of that, thinking that, well, it's going to the water, the water's clean, it's earth, whatever. In turn, that's negatively impacting the Elk Creek, which is a part of our watershed, which our watershed affects the Chesapeake Bay.
So the fertilizers and pesticides? Pesticides that's in that grass is making it to the elk, which, gotcha.
Goes to the Chesapeake Bay. And what we're doing by allowing our residents to do this is we're increasing our allocated number. We, the state gave the town of Elton an allocated number to reduce. You need to lose this amount of nitrogen and phosphorus from your storm sewer system. They gave it to us. It's about 5,000 pounds of nitrogen, 700 pounds of phosphorus.
When did they give it?
2012, I believe. And Gene would know more. She's on the committee for WIP for the county, so she knows the numbers. But I believe it's 5,000 pounds of nitrogen, 700 pounds of phosphorus. They gave that to us. Now, the number that they gave to us is because they analyzed our stormwater facilities. That's just the structures that we have. That's how they came up with those numbers. But the non-point source pollution, which is yard waste, is a total separate thing. And that's adding on to the allocation number. So we have to get rid of yard waste nitrogen and phosphorus, then get rid of what the state wants us to get rid of.
Sidney, should the yard waste be parted off or just left on the yard?
Left on the yard. That would be the most efficient, the best management practice the town can do. Anything we can do that makes us look like we're moving forward with this WIP program looks good for the town. If we're not moving forward with this program, the state's gonna start getting more aggressive and aggressive and aggressive. And they want an example so they may do some type of enforcement.
One thing I want to add here, there are major developments in the town, older developments that have those stormwater ponds. That the, I'll put examples, the Elton Heights, Friendship Heights, they don't even have stormwater ponds. So any stormwater runoff that enters the catch basin there ends up directly into the Big Elk Creek. Because newer developments are probably, like, for example, was Chapel Run, who was designed and had stormwater ponds. So it doesn't inhibit the nitrogen and phosphorus discharge or anything. So many developments don't have stormwater ponds because they evolved before you even knew about stormwater, other than getting rid of it. And Gene brought this up one time before, and we were talking about it, and I was in such a stage of fright that I never even thought about it afterward, is that when you look at the town proper downtown, all the impervious surface we have in this town, pond, creek, roofs, everything, it just drains down, drains directly to the creek. There's absolutely no intervention whatsoever. It's just straight out to the creek. So somehow, the possibility exists that we may have to intervene in some way and capture that stormwater and manage it. And that's a lot of stormwater that goes out of this town. If you're down here, you know, anybody who's been down here during a good storm, if you get down to off Howard and Oak Street, you'll see that big pipe that comes out there, which is coming out there. I mean, it's an enormous amount of water. Everybody's been here in a sec. But to capture that and put it in so the sediment kind of drops down and has time to cook a little bit, so to speak, whereas discharge can be the ideal way of trying to control nitrogen and phosphorus or debris or particulates from going into the creek. But that's a big deal. So I don't know if that will happen or not. So it's not a matter of just cutting 22 ponds. That's probably just one side of the control. So a lot of people think that, okay, we have to cut the ponds, but it's not gonna be that simple. I think the major developments that have stormwater ponds are probably our best asset in terms of all of the neighborhoods and town and all the development we have in town that don't have any intervention, intervening stormwater facilities. So I think when Sidney's talking about facilities, not just ponds, just any, like Cecil College over there, they don't have a pond, but they have an interceptor.
Yes.
And I think, look at the size of, oh my God, Union Hospital, they have an interceptor too for the garage.
Yeah, the old grid separator.
It's captured and underground, and then there's a way that, you know, filters into the sewer.
So there could be a way that we could build an interceptor underneath our municipal parking lot before we go?
We talked about that. It'd be, and it's basically to do with the cleaning, you know, you know, plant stuff there and everything. Of course, then you lose a lot of your work to, to design a facility to capture all the runoff, the complete 100 cubic feet a second runs off down in the hill, and you have, I think, something real simple and easy fix, but...
So I get a better grasp of this. When they did the testing, that was out, without the yard waste calculated in?
Right.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, they determined and...
When do they do it again? When do they want to come back and test again?
It depends on whenever they get off there. They're learning this thing as they go along. They're building the ladder as they're climbing up. So they have no, we don't know. What they don't know, we don't know. And when they come up with a number, it can change next month, it could change next year. It can increase, it can decrease. The main thing for the town to do would be to just start moving forward with it.
Yeah, we have to demonstrate a positive attitude and dedication to sources to do it, including the pond.
Right.
Unfortunately, the plan I'm thinking of, if they did the calculation without the grass included, then we have another way to re-tackling the grass problem, which still needs to go further.
See, I don't think you can limit the, cut the ponds, stop the grass. I think there's a lot more.
Yes, it's a lot more involved. But as far as compliance with the privately owned ponds, we're doing well with that. If you ride around town, you may see a pond that's overgrown, heavily overgrown by a private facility. Don't panic, please be aware, I try to get out and be knowledgeable of all 120-plus facilities that's out there. So I know something about what's going on with all the facilities, even though I'm Army 1. So, and we've worked out, I've worked out pretty much a good program or plan to deal with non-compliance as far as local businesses. Being involved with this program for so long, I've tried everything. I've tried sending a letter, you know, showing up at the office. And what I've come up with, I had to go out to each and every business and talk to that individual, allow them to know what I'm doing, what we're doing, what a stormwater pond is, what non-compliance is, and pretty much talk to them, gain rapport, and deal with them in that way. And from doing that, I've had tremendous amount of success with the local businesses as far as stormwater management. And that is a great asset to have. And the state always looks like that, and they always comment on that whenever we present a report to them as far as our compliance is concerned. Pretty much, that's the end of it.
Well, listen, I think you enlightened us, and we know the good, bad, and the ugly right now, and it's we put it into our hands to make some decisions here. And I know some decisions I'd like to make, and get some support, and I think... Anyone have any questions for Sidney?
I want to thank you, Mr. Gervais, and that information that you fed to us, you remind me of my history teacher, but anyway.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to...
No, no, you said real quick, had a real quick one that you gave us, but this is what you said. That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you, I really appreciate you giving that. All right, now we won't have the Lincoln light. Thank you very much, Sid. All right, I know that we're running close, but we got it? We gotta have Ted Bennett on. You certainly can, actually, if you, what's that? We got a lot. I mean, you tell me, how long are you gonna need?
Well, it's getting pretty late now, and I have to, I need to make sure of, I need to make sure of this. But I would like to make a comment-
Yes.
... once it's, uh, with the faculty's presentation. And I just wanted to say a couple things in support of anything, but I would let you know that we did a stormwater prevention, prevention plan for the waste treatment plan for the town, that's been completed and submitted to the town. As part of that sick bullet up there, it's what is it, a bullet?
Yes.
So, we did, we did work on that and, and it's in, we've been, we, we implemented it last year, and we physically check all the storm drains in the facility, twice a year, through the wet weather flow, dry weather flow, maintain them. Uh, and then, of course, it's a best management, uh, implementation program where you make sure there's biosolids in the ground that gets washed into the storm drain and stuff like that. But it's a pretty thorough plan, and that, uh, towards compliance with that permit that was issued back in two thousand two, the general permit for stormwater discharges to stand by in two thousand two. And, uh, but that was an excellent report, but, and one other thing I wanted to say that, and I keep striking this, but I did tell it on the broken record, but those gates that were gonna put in up there, that's gonna isolate the race and the ponds, is big, because when it rains, you get everything that's over the ground into the Big Elk Creek. And we cannot ice top that from coming into the race and coming into the treatment plan.
So, we had to have those.
We have to have those gates. It's gonna save a lot of money.
Didn't we move forward with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna just, I'm just, it's a great, it's gonna be a great plan.
Yeah, we did, we are doing that, right?
We're gonna do it, and I'm proud of that, we're gonna do it, because it's gonna, it's gonna save you a lot of money and it's gonna protect the town's water supply, and, you know, Big Elk Creek is a great, uh, you know, the watershed, it's great water quality, but when it rains, it goes down pretty quick.
It does.
And it's better not even try to, it's, we treat it, it's, it's not easy to treat, costs a lot of money to treat, but, uh, you know, it's better if we do all, if we did have to do that.
Very good, well, we're gonna put you on the agenda for next time.
I want you to come back and-
All right.
We want you to come back and clarify.
All right, very good. All right, we're gonna, uh, Ray, you weren't bringing anything?
Oh, no, no.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn this meeting here. Thank you.
Very quickly, I do want, just as part of the record, when Lewis comes back, if he hasn't already done so, he's gonna give you the resolution for the YNCIU standing session.
He did.